...time out of their busy nights, maybe delaying a little homework and other activities to come out tonight. I think we are now at 7:30, so I'm going to call to order the May 22, 2023 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Perusch, followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you can stand, please do so.
This evening, as we approach the Memorial Day weekend and are all eagerly looking forward to being able to celebrate the holiday with family and friends, I'm going to share a story that I told two years ago because it's relevant this evening. In September 1952, while on a training flight over rural Indiana with his squadron out of the Groseal Naval Air Station, a young Naval Reserve officer from Detroit flying a single-engine Corsair encountered a sudden and severe thunderstorm and crashed in a cornfield in rural Indiana. His widow was left with two children, a four-year-old and a six-month-old. He was buried with military honors at Mount Elbow Cemetery on Detroit's east side. His name isn't on a large monument anywhere, but we honor his sacrifice every day, especially on Memorial Day. The four-year-old boy who was left fatherless in this story is my husband. The grief and loss that the family endured in 1952 from such a sudden and devastating loss isn't any different from those experienced by military families today, despite increased awareness of the need for support by the VA and other agencies. And this grief is no different than that experienced by the families and friends of those whose lives are cut short by the gun violence that seems to be spreading into every community in some way or another, whether they be law enforcement members killed in the line of duty, or civilians who were just in the wrong place at the wrong time. We memorialize the victims, but sometimes it's easy to forget the shattered lives that are left behind. Support services for the survivors of deaths in the military and law enforcement, and for those who experienced the terrible toll of gun violence, the kid that can take, are much better than they were in 1952 when my father-in-law died, but those resources are never enough. It's easy to forget those who are left behind, who are traumatized by the violence, whether it's the first responders, or the medical personnel, or the coworkers, or the innocent bystanders who witnessed the horror. Violence always leaves a lot of collateral damage. As we celebrate our freedom to get together this upcoming weekend, let us all pause to remember all of those who have given their lives for our country, those whose names adorn monuments and memorials, as well as the millions more whose names are lost to history. Remember also those who have lost their lives to gun violence, whose names spurs to take action to prevent more senseless deaths in the future. But let us also remember the families and friends and all the others that they leave behind. Let us honor all of these victims by redoubling our efforts to provide services for the survivors, and may they all find peace and strength to carry on. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, that brings us to item four on tonight's agenda, which is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner Macy?
Please approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Macy to approve the agenda. We have a second by Commissioner Perusch. Discussion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We have an agenda. All right, we have a couple proclamations to give tonight. It's my duty, but also my great honor, to read these proclamations aloud. I'm going to come down to our mobile mic down here. And we're going to begin with the proclamation declaring the first Friday in June as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I see Lindsay and Tommy Warren are here today, and I'll ask if they want to come up along with any other members of the Moms of Action up here. All right. I don't think my kids say I need a microphone, but I'm going to use it just in case. Okay, it really is a great honor to read this proclamation. I know each of you, independently and as a group, have worked very hard to make a number of changes, awareness about gun violence in our local community and throughout the state. In fact, today was a historic moment in Royal Oak where we had the governor here signing a bill, a red flag bill, right here on our courthouse steps. And so that is a truly testament to the volunteers that you see here today and many others throughout the state, as well as all the victim advocates fighting for change in this state. So it's a real honor and real fitting that we read this proclamation today. This is a proclamation declaring the first Friday in June as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas every day, more than 120 Americans are killed by gun violence and more than 200 are shot and wounded, with an average of more than 17,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in any other high-income countries. And whereas Michigan has 1,382 gun deaths every year, with a rate of 13.7 deaths per 10,000 people, a crisis that costs the state $16.8 billion each year, of which $380.5 million is paid by taxpayers, Michigan has the 25th highest rate of gun deaths in the United States. And whereas gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities, with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in a nation occurring in 127 cities. And whereas cities across the nation, including Royal Oak, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is a mayor's highest responsibility. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas mayors and law enforcement officers, in partnership with local violence intervention activists and resources, know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever, as we see an increase in firearm homicides and non-fatal shootings across the country, increased calls to domestic violence hotlines, and increase in city gun violence. Whereas in January 2013, Hadia Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at the age of 15. And on June 2, 2023, to recognize the 26th birthday of Hadia Pendleton, born June 2, 1997, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadia Pendleton and all the victims of gun violence, including the families and loved ones of those victims. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadia's friends, who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 2, the first Friday in June in 2023, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas by wearing orange on June 2, 2023, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the hands of people who should not have access to them, encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our families and communities safe. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Royal Oak Mayor Mike Fournier, and members of the Royal Oak City Commission hereby declare the first Friday in June, June 2, 2023, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Royal Oak, to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence. We encourage all citizens to raise awareness by wearing orange, to demonstrate their support of Royal Oak and all surrounding communities, in efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence, to honor and value human lives, and to further declare that we, as a country, must do more to end this public health crisis. It's my honor to present this to you, Ms. Warren.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to take one second to speak. I think you read every stat that I wrote down in that amazing proclamation. I wanted to thank Mayor Fournier and the entire City Commission. This is the seventh year that you have honored Wear Orange Day, so it means the world to us. As we all know, this is a continuing epidemic in this country. One of the stats that was not mentioned in there is that it is now the number-one killer of children in America, and we can do better. Another stat that stands out, that you will not see on the news, is that across this country, 2/3 of gun violence is suicide. So the bill that was passed today will greatly reduce that number. So again, I want to thank everyone here today. If you are interested in some of these stats or want to find out some more information, our parent org is called Everytown, and everytownresearch.org. You can explore by state and see all the information on Michigan. Thank you guys again. Appreciate you.
And thank you for everything that you do, and for keeping us believing that change can happen. Okay. Are there any Girl Scouts in the house today? All right, do you guys want to all come on up?
Yes.
I'm not going to do an accidental mic drop, so I'm just going to bring this over here. I'm going to ask Commissioner Colo to come up here as well, because he is our commissioner, who de facto represents Oakland Elementary.
Go Oakland!
Come on up here, don't be shy. I know you guys have been up to a lot of good work in this community, doing some really great things. Is this your first time in City Hall? No? Okay, good. Second? Tell you, these kids are accomplished. Wow.
Tell them about your first time here.
Wow.
We had a brainstorming session.
I wasn't invited? Aw, man. You guys like pizza? We got some pretty good pizza in Royal Oak, don't we? But you know what's even better than pizza in Royal Oak? Our Girl Scouts. I'm pretty sure of that. I'm pretty darn sure. Flavored crust. So this is really a great honor, as the mayor, to be able to read you guys' proclamation. And when I'm done reading it, Commissioner Colo has a copy of this proclamation for each and every single one of you, so you can take it home and look at it, pull it up years from now, and be reminded of all the cool things that you're doing to help our community. And we are really grateful. There is a need in this community that you identified. People are hungry, and the work that you've done is going to help people access food that they need. And it's really important work that you're doing, and it's long-lasting work. And for young people, you should be really proud of yourself, what you've done. And so this is really an honor for all of us to read this proclamation. So this is a proclamation designating May 21 to May 27, 2023, Food Pantry Awareness Week in Royal Oak. Whereas the city of Royal Oak recognizes that food insecurity is a serious issue affecting many individuals and families in our community. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has further exasperated food insecurity in our community and highlighted the importance of food pantries and other organizations that provide food assistance. And whereas the city of Royal Oak values equity and believes that everyone deserves access to healthy and nutritious food regardless of their socioeconomic status. And whereas the city of Royal Oak recognizes the critical role that community organizations and volunteers play in addressing food insecurity and supporting those needs, those in need. And whereas Girl Scout Troop 76687 from Oakland Elementary has demonstrated their commitment to their community by creating a map of all the little free pantries in the area and creating and stocking a pantry at the Salter Center. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Mayor Fournier, and the Royal Oak City Commission proclaim the week of May 21 to May 27, 2023, as Food Pantry Awareness Week, and encourage all residents to learn more about food insecurity in our community, support local food pantries and organizations, and recognize the important role volunteers and community organizations play in addressing food insecurity, and commend Girl Scout Troop 76687 for their dedication to the community and their efforts to increase awareness of food security and support those in need. Congratulations, and much appreciation. And may I present this proclamation to you? Yes? Please say a few words, yes.
Okay, so how about we pass by your phone down the line, because I don't know if it's going to reach everyone.
Okay, go ahead, please.
We are Troop 76687 from Oakland Elementary. In 2021, we have constructed a pantry for the Salter Community Center. Our troop wanted to build a pantry to help stop hunger in Royal Oak. We noticed more food insecurity in our community. Since its installation, we have struggled to keep it full. At every meeting, we donate food to put in the pantry. And we still see a quantity being empty. So with the city of Royal Oak, we created Food Pantry Awareness Week.
So our community could help us keep all the pantries in Royal Oak full. We met with Mr. Brandon Colo and Ms. Judy Davids to help us put our plan into action.
Mr. Colo and Ms. Davis helped create MAP and helped promote Food Pantry Awareness Week.
We hope to bring awareness to our food insecurities across the community.
Educate our residents in ways they can help.
With our digital map and pocket map of the locations of the free little pantry.
Thank you to Mr. Colo, Ms. Davids, and the city of Royal Oak for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to the commission. You all made this happen. You all are helping people in your community, and this is leadership in action. So thank you all so much. How about a big round? Okay, go do your word searches, homework, there's a lot of stuff you've got to do tonight. Go. Your proclamation's broken, wasn't it? There's a masterful, so you guys got a little special role. Definitely doing something right in Royal Oak, and we have so many amazing children thinking of others. Great job to the kids, great job to the parents. All right, I'll give you some paper towel. We'll find out if these microphones are grounded pretty soon. We see Commissioner Dubbux's hair stand up, we'll know. The answer is no. Okay, to carry on, Commissioner Douglas, will we get some paper towels?
Carry on.
All right. All right, that brings us to the next part of our agenda, which is public comment. We've got a few hearings tonight and whatnot, so I'm just going to go through and just line it up tonight, require the rule reading here. The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to help make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issue, whether or not it's on the agenda. I ask that comments be directed to the commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. In addition to public comment, there will be a public hearing at tonight's meeting. If you're here to comment on the public hearing on the adoption of the fiscal year 2023/2024 Budget and General Appropriations Act, you can wait till that time at the public hearing, and we'll have public comment again. Same rules apply. If you wish to speak tonight at either public comment or at the hearing, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor, and then come up to the podium. For the record, we ask that you state your name and address. Please be mindful that we wish to hear from anyone who wants to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, not per topic, with the exception of the public hearing, where you may raise your hand again and you can speak at the public hearing as well, as long as your comments are germane to that public hearing. If you don't wish to speak tonight, no problem, you can always reach out to us via email. Please note, the City Commission typically doesn't respond to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes, and when that topic is discussed, we will ask those questions. If your questions are unrelated to any of the agenda topics, our city manager is taking notes and will follow up accordingly. So with that, who's first?
I was calling to give my name and address, because when this topic was brought up before, there were death threats. So I, again, I decline. I'm speaking about the Dream Cruise, I'm not speaking about the Dream Cruise weekend, as people couldn't just leave town that weekend, nor am I speaking about the classic car drive up and down Woodward, enjoying a polite audience. I'm speaking about the mega trucks, cars, and motorcycles with ramped-up mufflers that race around the islands and side streets. This starts from March to November on warm days, from the afternoon until well past 11 o'clock. With global warming, this might be a year-round activity. The Royal Oak and Birmingham police have done everything they can, but were thwarted by the state over their noise ordinance. I think Birmingham police are attempting something of that order right now. I understand Woodward is a state road, so there should be more than local police having to address this problem. I'm asking the Royal Oak City Commissioners to meet with Birmingham City Council and invite county and state representatives. The agenda would be to listen to citizens who are impacted with this noise pollution, and then come up with a task force. This should include council members, county commissioners, and state representatives to develop a consistent plan of action to address this problem. The exhaust and noise pollution, as well as the interrupted sleep, impact us in ways not even we know at present. I trust that council members will really listen and follow through on this request.
Thank you. And I know I don't, I'm going to break the rule, but I'm sad to hear that somebody has made death threats, and I hope, I'm not going to put you on the spot, but that you certainly report those to our police department and our detectives. That's unacceptable, and in today's age, we have to take every threat seriously, so please, I, you know.
The police handled it a couple of years ago.
Okay, good.
But I...
No, it's still traumatizing. Yeah, it's awful, and it's, we understand and we hear you. And we do have a Woodward committee that we are working, and noise is one of the items that we're talking about. Okay, who's next?
My name is Jo Goodman. The property I'm speaking about is the property where the Ace Hardware and the CVS is. I'm one of the owners, investors in that property. My nephew, Robert Goodman, is known to many of you here, and he couldn't be here tonight. He's at the police charity golf function. So I'm here to give you my comments on the sidewalk improvement program. The new sidewalks of 2023 are proposed to be on Knowles and Troy, which is one block this way. It's a lovely street. It has houses on one side of it and a sidewalk on one side of the street. There's not a lot of traffic on that street. The purpose of the sidewalk improvement program, as I've read, is enhance pedestrian safety and access. This street gets very little traffic, and there's no, the side of the street that has no sidewalk has no access to any buildings. It abuts the back of the Ace Hardware and the CVS, and it's fenced, so there's literally no access. In addition, it's a lovely green space. It appears that the owners have planted, in the last recent times, very nice shrubbery and bushes along the entire fence, and there are some mature trees on that property, one of which, if there was a sidewalk put in, I was looking at today, I'm not sure how they'd go around that sidewalk. The houses across the street have front porches with chairs on them, so the people there sit on the porches and look out. And the view of a green space, in my opinion, is really much nicer than looking at concrete sidewalks. I might even suggest that we would put a couple benches. There's a grouping of mature trees, and if we would put a bench or two in that area, people who are walking, walking their dogs, may have a place to sit and relax. This location was brought up and suggested for a sidewalk last year at the meeting, and it was exempted. And I believe it's because it was deemed unnecessary at that time. So I was hoping that that would occur again this year, and that perhaps it could be exempted for more than that amount of time, if we would even add a little park, some park features, so it wouldn't have to be brought up each time. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Goodman. Appreciate it.
May I mention one other thing? I have a few pictures of this site, if anyone's not familiar and would like to see, I can show them.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tom Togwiler, 1018 Longfellow. If anybody was here or viewing this at the last commission meeting, I was here notifying the community of Pancake Breakfast on Memorial Day, sponsored by the Royal Oak Historical Society. And as I say, the public is welcome. I'll tell you, they're the best pancakes in town, and I hope everybody can make it. That being said, we are really, really billing this as a community event. I know in the years that I've been involved with this, with the Historical Society, I've run into old friends, made a lot of new friends, and it's a real community effort to really, really get to know your neighbors in our community, so I hope everybody can make it. I also would like to sincerely thank the Downtown Development Authority and the Holiday Market for their sponsorship on this. We couldn't do this without them, and it's much appreciated. And the Royal Oak Historical Society is, we like to bill ourselves as the keepers of Royal Oak history. We have a wonderful museum. It's open on Tuesday and Thursday from 1:00 to 4:00, and most Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 also. Invite anybody at any time during those hours that come in and see us. It is much appreciated. I also like to remind Police Chief Moore that anybody on duty that day can stop by and have some pancakes on us, and would love to see you, and love to see everybody in the community also there. One last thing.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to hand these to the city clerk to pass out to anybody at, and hope to see everybody there. Thank you. Can I see a hand in the back?
Joseph Fisher, 310 West 6, Unit 401. I'd also like to build upon your comment, mayor. I'm sorry that you experienced that. I also find some of the driving behavior I see on Woodward annoying. I'm not afraid to give my address. If you go there, there's a 12-gauge on the other side of the door. Sorry, Orange people, sorry. But yeah, I'm not afraid. I'm here tonight to ask about ability, people with disability rights. I recently made an ADA request to my apartment building, and I don't know if, you know, they've had 10 days to respond. I don't know if a response constitutes, we'll get back to you. I don't think it does. does. Eventually, they got back to me after about two to three weeks, and, you know, we're still working through the matter. But there isn't really any teeth in the ADA law by which, you know, we can hold management companies responsible for things that are less than just gross malfeasance. I'm wondering if it's possible, if there's any way to vet management companies before they operate in the city of Royal Oak, to make sure they have certain things ready. When I made the request, I anticipated they'd want information from my doctor. I proactively went and made an appointment, got a letter from my doctor, but then when I got the form, there was another form that needed to be signed, which required me to make a second appointment. I don't think this is the experience I should have had, you know, under the federal law, and if there's anything the city can do to make that better, that would be fantastic. Anything -- police, I like to give a shout out to police for doing a great job the past few weekends, policing things on Friday and Saturday nights. I'm an Uber driver, so that's why I consider the aggressive driving that I see on roads all over Oakland County, you know, pretty serious. I've been rear-ended twice in the past six months. Driver causing the accident drove off both times. Both happened in Oakland County. I, you know, know Royal Oak and Birmingham were mentioned. I think this really is a county issue. I want to see Oakland County Sheriff units patrolling all of Woodward for not just, you know, I'm not worried about the rolling stops or the, you know, roll through -- roll through the red light too late. I'm worried about the people who are aggressively swerving in and out of traffic, doing things that are genuinely dangerous, not just simply against the law, things that are outright reckless and inconsiderate of other people's lives and their finances as well. And one other thing, he's done a great job as a ex-city -- or sorry, ex-state representative. He's doing a great job as our county commissioner, county commissioner representative. I think it's time we get a street named after Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
We have one. It's M1.
Would M1 suffice? No. Yes, ma'am.
Hello. Chris and Kelly McKinney. We live at 906 Cedar Hill. We've lived there peacefully for about almost 13 years now, peacefully with our neighbors. And we're here on behalf of our neighbors that live in the 12 and Maxwell area, right across from Northwood Elementary. We'd like you to review and consider making improvements to the city's animal ordinance. The house directly behind us recently sold, and the new owner of the home owns two or three dogs of her own, and she's been fostering numerous dogs for our local rescue called Rebel Dogs Detroit. And they're known for picking up strays off the streets of Detroit, and we're concerned that they aren't properly vetting their dogs before they're putting them in foster situations. And we have two children, one of whom has a medical issue, and he likes to jump on the trampoline in our backyard for his sensory needs. And on two separate occasions recently in the last month, two different foster dogs have jumped our fence and gotten into our yard and have chased our son through our yard. Sorry, I'm like really nervous. We've filed police reports. We've called code enforcement. We've spoken to animal control. We've written letters to the city. We've called the county. We've called everybody that we can think of that can try and help us, and we've been told there's nothing anybody can do because nobody's gotten hurt yet. So we are here to ask you. I know that you were able to step in and work together as a team to solve the African cat situation that was happening in our city, and we're asking you all to please, 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 please review the animal ordinance for the city. We, at this point, our children can't be in the backyard without us. They're nine and 11. They're not like very, very small. They should be able to be in their backyard by themselves. And there's children that use the crosswalk that's adjacent to her driveway to get to and from school. They're scared. They've witnessed dogs fighting, and we've seen up to eight dogs in the backyard behind us. So I could go on and on. I know I'm running out of time, but I please ask you to please consider our request. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your story. We appreciate it. Mr. Bray, we can look at the interpretation of the dangerous animal ordinance that we have?
We will.
Follow-up to the commission?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? We'll go with Mr. Harrison next.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill Harrison, 2729 Trafford, Royal Oak. About affordable housing. The Royal Oak annual median income is $87,316. The Royal Oak affordable housing income, therefore, is $52,390 per year, or $4,366 per month, or $25.19 per hour, based on 60% of the annual median income. Affordable housing cost is $1,310 per month, based on 30% of the Royal Oak affordable housing income, just to get it all straight. The average Royal Oak apartment rent is $1,398 per month for an 890-square-foot apartment, where this is equivalent to $1.57 per square foot per month. The contractor for converting the Fourth Street Nursing Home to apartments stated that the target rental rate will be $2.25 per square foot. This is 143% of the affordable rent. Yet, you are in support of this project. My question is why? The Royal Oak demographics, 34% of Royal Oak residents are renters, and of course, 66% are owners. 15% of Royal Oak apartment rental rates are between $700 and $1,000 per month. 63% are between $1,000 and $1,500 per month. Therefore, 78% of the current Royal Oak apartment rents are less than or equal to the $1,310 per month affordable housing range, okay? So, you know, I don't understand the big push to do more and convert single-family housing into rentable spaces. Anyway, I attended the charrettes. I was appalled by the lack of attendance of both the day and nighttime meetings. The meetings were not scheduled to maximize public participation, as they were when the current master plan was developed. During the housing charrette, I related how people moved to our subdivision due to the country atmosphere. The moderator said, "You can't have that." So why do you and the consultant continue to say that there is no predetermined conclusion regarding the elimination of single-family zoning, and why such a concern about the "no rezoning" signs? Changing the character of Royal Oak by urbanization will cause people to move further north, where the country atmosphere still exists. It's interesting to note that both Birmingham and Troy residents are also objecting to urbanization. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. All right, who's next? Mr. Bob?
Thank you, Mayor Fournay, and thank you, Commissioners. My name's Paul Vile. I live at 2408 Galpin. I'm here to speak about the 2023-2024 budget and want to acknowledge my appreciation for the inclusion of a full-time sustainability manager. Want to acknowledge that I think it's absolutely essential that we have a full-time sustainability manager in order to meet our 2030 greenhouse gas emissions goals. It's a pretty tall lift and will require some real coordination, especially getting -- doing an awful lot of community outreach as it relates to all the residential greenhouse gas emissions come from, you know, natural gas and electricity. So anyway, I'm here to support and I'm pleased that it's included in the proposed budget. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bob. Mark?
Good evening. My name's Mark Sackett. I'm the general manager of the Royal Oak Leprechauns, and we are opening up our season here real soon. And I had all my notes and everything, and they disappeared on me. So I just want to say June 3rd is our opening day. Mayor, can you do it? Your arm okay?
I think I can do it.
Okay, okay. So I think we might be -- you might be losing this there, your opportunity here and after this this year, I think. So hopefully, June 3rd. We'll talk more if we could. We've already had -- we have got three exhibition games scheduled before that. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, we've got 500 kids coming each day, 1,500 kids in that park, so that'll be awesome. There's already been several spring -- we call it spring training games, high school games. We've used these high school rivalry games on Friday nights. We call our Friday Night Lights. We've been using it to train our staff, our sport management interns for the summer. And that's been great. We brought a lot of people into the park, probably about 300 to 500 people each night when it wasn't raining. Prior to that, there's been some early college games that have been going on with Rochester College. I believe Macomb Community College used the field one time, and it's been really a great opportunity for these programs. I am working real hard and trying to get OCC to bring back their baseball program. Their baseball program left in 1983, so I'm trying to bring it back, but it's been a challenge. So we'll see what happens here. For the Commissioners tonight, if you don't mind, if I give you a little gift. I don't know why. I've never done this before, but I've got some free season passes for you. So let's give each one of the Commissioners their season pass, and I do that not to bribe you or anything, because you guys have done great for us. But we've been bringing thousands of people to this park, and this park is awesome, but it's getting tired. Fences are old, and we've had -- we have had some people fall, trip and fall, the fans fall, but we've helped them and taken good care of our fans. We've had a player run into the outfield fence because there's no warning track. So I'm working with the Parks Department and trying to help build that up and take care of the park as best we can. But when you come, hopefully, if you can make it to a game, and I'm going to give you two each, I'll get you in the gates, so you can bring your significant other or a friend, or give it to a couple people. Please walk around. Look at the bathrooms. Look at the fencing. Look at -- look at everything that is there, because there's a lot of people coming to that park now, and we just want to make sure we're safe, we're right, and people are seeing the complete Royal Oak, and we're directing them downtown to a lot of our sponsors. So we're excited for the season. I said about 12 interns from sport management programs across the state. We're excited about that. Our team consists of guys from -- we have three guys on our team from California, one from Arizona. We've got a couple from Illinois, a couple from Kentucky. They attend schools like Murray State, Central Michigan, Michigan State, Valparaiso, University of Southern California, UAB. Yep, that's it. And, well, we have one kid from Michigan, but U of M, but I don't like to talk about him.
Keep talking about the same kids.
No greens, no whites, so please.
I didn't give you a label this time.
I know.
Turn it down like a fagot.
Oh, geez, city people, the big ones, you know, the people that the six-digit salaries, oh, then the six-digit salary you guys make.
I don't even know if it's six digits if you get rid of the decimal point.
You missed one. You missed one.
Thank you, Ms. Monahan.
Ow, I'm sorry.
She was one of those attorneys with the...
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mark. We look forward to seeing you this season. It's always a great time. You're doing a great job there, building on it every year. And, you know, this has been a great partnership since the first pitch to where we're at today. Ha, get it? I used a dad joke, not even a verb. It was the first pitch to where we are today. It's night-and-day difference. And, you know, even for a lot of us that have kids up here and everything, just sneaking out and going to a game, having a hot dog, and, you know, watching baseball, right, literally in our backyard, is a lot of fun and I think brings a tremendous amount of community value. So thank you to you and your team for all you do.
Thank you for your support.
All right, I see Mr. Ashley.
Good evening. Alan Ashley, Royal Oak Manor. I don't know how many of you people walk the streets of Royal Oak. I do almost every day when it's not raining or not too cold. Last Wednesday and Thursday, I did my normal walks. It was about 11:30. I walked down Washington Avenue, and in the past, Washington Avenue at 11:30 is busy on Wednesday and Thursday. People want to go to lunch. Well, from the Peaking House, the old Peaking House, down to Sixth Street, total of 17 cars on Washington. Seventeen cars at lunch hour. This, again, goes back to those stupid meters that you have invested, and that is driving people away. At the DDA last meeting, the City Manager heard two people who own businesses. One is losing $40,000 since those meters went in. Another one, who actually sits on the DDA, will be leaving next year because she can't afford any more business, losing business in Washington. Number one, because of the parking, and number two, of all the things that are held, like art beats and eat. Every one of you think it's a four-day event. It is not a four-day event. It is 10 days. You start on Tuesday doing setup. That throws everybody out of that parking lot, P7, which is across from Royal Oak Manor. They have to park somewhere. Businesses start losing business immediately because nobody's coming downtown at night to visit the bars or to walk the streets or go to the stores. That lasts all the way till after Labor Day, at least Tuesday or Wednesday. Those businesses, people won't be done. A lot of the students, a lot of the kids that come down normally in the summer are back in school. Businesses are losing. I'm wondering if it's better to pay the penalty to get rid of these meters, and the DDA has said that they will pay for putting in the old meters. This has got to stop, or you're going to be looking at 1970 like in downtown Royal Oak and Highland Park as a ghost town. This decision to put those stupid meters in is now having people lose their businesses, their livelihoods, whatever they worked for their whole lives, is going down the tubes because you people are stuck in a rut to put stupid meters in so these people can park and be safe. It isn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley. All right, who's next? On the corner in the back? Yep.
Dr. Wallace Anderson, 404 Mount Vernon. I've been affiliated with a group calling ourselves ROAR, Royal Oakers for Accountability and Responsibility, for some years. I was among the founding members. It is truly nonpartisan. Members come together on city issues that are not affiliated with political parties, for example, the city's budget. ROAR members range from progressives such as myself to deep conservatives. We do not talk politics. To demean ROAR's voice, however, the Greater Royal Oak Democratic Club and Oakland County Democratic Party, of which apparently all Commissioners and the Mayor are members, dismiss ROAR using the most base of logical fallacies, abusive argumentum ad hominem, specifically untrue, insulting, demeaning labels. It's a crappy strategy. While it does work, it really should not be used by elected officials. Behaviors should be respectful to all residents. Among ROAR members are residents who have done years of community service and deserve respect, and ROAR itself has done community projects, specifically work on Barton Park South. After Commissioner Kim Gibbs died, ROAR raised funds to landscape the gazebo area in Barton Park South to memorialize her generosity and civic service. I remain appalled that the City Commission censured her for exercising her constitutional rights to free speech and assembly. ROAR members have tended that gazebo for the past three years, watering, adding, and replacing plants, and thanks to ROAR's work, the city can now rent the gazebo for weddings. Here's the problem. Here's the problem. Annually, the DPS invites the community to adopt a park for a day. Once ROAR beautified Barton Park South, we continued our long-term commitment to the city by participating in the '22 and '23 spring cleanups. The invitation flyer states, "Every group to sign up will receive a certificate signed by the mayor." In May '22, I received a certificate with the line for the mayor's signature blank. I called and was told it was missed, probably because it's stuck to another certificate. Okay, so I took the certificate to City Hall to be signed. After two or three months, I pursued the issue and eventually received a certificate signed not by the mayor, but by Aaron Filipski, Director of the DPS. And this year's certificate is also from Aaron. My specific complaint is that even such minor matters as certificates of appreciation for community work are politicized in this city. And to close, I'm going to move from this relatively small problem to an egregious example of civic misbehavior. The commission's declaring that Oakland Schools Technical Center at Delamere and Meyer Drive is not a school in order to subvert the drug-free school zone rule.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. All right, who's next? See a hand in the back, black shirt? Yep. Must be election season.
Few of us attended, had a very interesting last week, not as many as should have been. But this is it. On page four of the 50-page report that the McKenna Consultants produced after the February 25th master plan revision, public input meetings started, stated that there was an unfounded perception of the public belief that the consultants were driving toward predetermined recommendations which included for multifamily housing that encroaches on single-family neighborhoods and for the addition of lower-priced housing. Unfortunately, instead of the perception being disproved, the recent charrettes further reinforced it. And the charrettes, because even time, every time a resident gave an opinion which did not comply with the initiative toward the insertion of multifamily housing, also known as attainable or affordable housing, is in single-family neighborhoods, the consultants changed the subject, called on someone else who debated the point, often in a ratio of two consultants to each one resident. This should not have happened if the objective was to truly make public input, to take in public input, and was very disappointing, to put it nicely. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, please be patient with me. This is my first time speaking. Kathy Grant, Elmhurst. Okay. And I'm going to read what I wrote, because it's easier for me. On Tuesday, May 16th, of the public master plan charrette meetings, I witnessed an assault and harassment during the public meeting. The attack was intimidating and frightened, frightened many of the seniors, citizens who were there in attendance. The man who disrupted the meeting during the public comment section was overheard to say he had been invited to attend by a city, by the city as a special appointee. As such, his conduct as a special guest didn't reflect well in the city, nor did it foster the contribution of all the voices to the common good. The week-long charrette's phase of master plan public engagement was not well-publicized nor well-attended due to the daytime scheduling, which conflicted with many daytime work schedules. I myself had to take the whole week off and I did attend every session. In addition, holding the public, the meetings in a more accessible meeting place, such as a public school auditorium, would have been preferred over meeting on the, at the Center Street parking garage. The cameras used to record the meetings, as a public record, should have been in good working order and should remain on during all public comment sections, even when it runs over. In contrast, the camera didn't record the man's inappropriate abusive behavior, as it had either been turned off or had been conveniently malfunctioned. Continued police presence at all essential meetings to protect, I'm sorry, to protect the vulnerable and to keep the peace. That should be number one, safety. There is an anti-violence proclamation on the Royal Oak website. I would assume that all enforcement, this would be enforced at all public meetings going forward. I personally felt very intimidated and fearful for myself and the senior citizens in attendance, particularly the one that was sitting on a rollator walker, very close to the man who made that attack. Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Grant. All right. Anybody else here to speak at public comment? Oh, I'm sorry. My scan isn't. It's the flowers. It's the flowers.
Nancy Poprovsky, 1119 Matavia, thanks for listening. After attending all but one of the charrette meetings, I was disappointed at the inconvenience of the time slots for the majority of the public. Parking spots at certain times were also a concern for some people. A comment was made at the final presentation by a former city employee along with some other citizens' input. She and others stated, "I propose we have more meetings that are neighborhood-specific, similar to what was done in the prior master plan." There were 11 meetings that focused on neighborhood involvement. These and the Planning Commission's Plan Steering Committee held its meetings at the senior center to facilitate citizen involvement. Public hearings were held at Baldwin Theater, OCC's Theater, and the library auditorium. Meetings were held after 7:00 PM, when most people can attend and are not at work. And they were held throughout the whole master plan process. This is critical to bringing the community along as recommendations are being considered. Page 217 of the current master plan lists these meetings that were held 20 years ago for concrete examples. For the new master plan charrettes, unfortunately, only one not eye-catching postcard was sent to me last January. Nothing else in my mailbox. I find it ironic that I received and counted over 30 mailings for both parties, all election, campaigning, but only one small postcard for something as important as our city's future, like a fair new master plan. So my conclusion is that the charrettes are not finished and need to be extended. They should be called Share-ettes. Share more with the public, with better times and places that will include all current and future citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poprovsky. Okay, anybody else? Going once, going twice. Okay, we're going to bring the meeting to this side of the table. And we are going to be on agenda number eight, which is the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Does anyone wish to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in our agenda? Commissioner Prush?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Prush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubach. Discussion on the consent agenda. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, that brings us to number nine, which is Review of New Sidewalks 2023 Sidewalk Improvement Plan. See, Ms. Donahue is here.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. Tonight, I'm here requesting your direction regarding potential new sidewalks that would be installed where none currently exist within this year's target area. The overall goal here is to provide continuous sidewalks that link neighborhoods, schools, and community facilities to create a highly walkable city. This year's target area is generally in the southwest corner of the city and it does exclude the downtown area. There are three locations that we're looking at this year and I put them in the memo here on the map. So we have locations identified as number one, two, and three. Those properties that could potentially be affected by this were notified of tonight's meeting via letter. And we also provided them with a cost estimate for their potential location and that's also in the packet as well, the summary of the costs. So I'll briefly walk through the three locations and then if you have questions or discussion, I'm happy to help out with that afterward. So location number one is along the east side of Forestale Road. This is north of Cedar Hill Drive and it runs right along the railroad right-of-way. There is currently a sidewalk along the west side of the road and that sidewalk terminates in a ramp, you can kind of see in this image here. And then you can cross over to the other side of the street. So if you're, if you're walking along the west side, you cross over and then continue up north to 12 Mile Road. To install sidewalk here would require significant, or excuse me, I'm looking at the wrong one here. There is enough sidewalk space here to install a new sidewalk that would be five feet wide, but installation would require removal of a very large and healthy spruce tree, which is shown in this first picture here, that's adjacent to the property for 1538 Forestale. And there's also a significant amount of brush and scrub trees that would need to be removed near the north end of this area. This area was exempted back in 2014, which was the last time we were in this part of the city. And we are recommending exempting it here again based on the existing obstructions that are there and also the assumed relatively low pedestrian usage in that area. Location number two is along Hilldale Drive. This is similar to the last one in that it does run along the railroad right-of-way again. Along the east side of Hilldale Drive, this is from Cloverdale up to Greenleaf Drive. Again, there's a sidewalk existing on the west side of the road and then this yellow area would be the potential location for a new sidewalk. To install sidewalk here would require a significant amount of earthwork, especially at the north end, near the bridge viaduct, right there at Greenleaf. And in order to install a sidewalk, we would have to put a permanent retaining wall in there because there's such a difference in grades there. Also, digging around a very old bridge is not something I'm super excited about. So that'd be a bit of a risky situation to try and install a sidewalk. There are several obstructions here as well, including mature pine trees. There's three utility poles that would be in the way. There's a lot of brush to clear. And so with this area, we are also recommending exempting from new sidewalk. And the final location, which was brought up at public comment tonight, is along East Third Street. This is between Knowles and Phillips Place, right behind the CVS and Ace Hardware, just around the corner here. There is enough space and the appropriate grades to install new sidewalk if desired. There is one 12-inch diameter tree that would need to be removed. These images don't show it super great, but if you're on Google Earth, you can see it pretty easily, right in the middle of the block. That would be in the way of the sidewalk. All the other trees could remain. And there is also an existing shrub, which is here at the corner of Phillips Place and you can see that in this middle image on the bottom here. It would kind of lean into the sidewalk ramp, so we would have to remove that one as well. There is existing sidewalk along the north side of East Third Street and there's ramps that provide access to that sidewalk. So if, for example, you were walking along the south side of Third, you'd have to cross over, go to the north side, and then cross back over again. But the ramps do exist to give you access to that pathway. Considering that this is a higher pedestrian area, it's near the downtown, staff is recommending installation of sidewalk at this location. The city has historically installed sidewalks on both sides of the road when it's feasible and there's not a significant reason not to do that. The property was exempted here back in 2014, however, the specific reasons are not immediately clear. I watched the old video and it really wasn't discussed thoroughly. So if anyone remembers, that might be helpful for the conversation tonight. But from our viewpoint, just looking at that as a potential installation, we believe it's feasible and are recommending installation at this location. So that's summary of all three and I will turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Any questions for the city engineer, Mr. Collo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Donahue, I'm looking at number one, the first one, actually number one and two. I guess my general question is, when we recommend not doing a sidewalk, which I, this makes sense in these cases, do you ever consider doing a curb pump though, where the one sidewalk is ending to the other side of the street so that they, the person who is walking down, I believe that's the north side of the street, or the, it would be.
Like if you're on the east side of the road.
East side of the street, yeah, can cross over to the west at some point. Do you ever consider that? Because I know like in our second example, that, that transition already exists.
That one exists, yeah, exactly. So that one exists for the west, sorry, east to west side down here, there's a ramp right at the termination point. On this one, I'd have to look on Google Earth to remember for sure, but I think there's a ramp just south of there at the next road intersection. So you can, if you're planning to continue on, you could cross over. And then the sidewalk that exists really just ends at that property's driveway. So if you were trying to walk to your own property, you had access to that point, but if you were trying to go somewhere else, you would cross before you got to that point. It could be done. Again, I don't really think it would be used very heavily, but it's something we could do. I often discourage mid-block crosswalks unless it's like at a park or a school or something that you're going to see a lot of pedestrians needing to use that. In this case, I don't know that it would really be warranted.
That's my only question. Thank you.
Go Commissioner Prush and then Commissioner Macy.
Just a comment in terms of that location, because that's an area that's in our neighborhood and we walk that area quite a bit. There's not very, very much pedestrian activity because there is no direct link there from that area to 12 Mile Road. There is a very, very small paved path and you can barely see it at the top of the diagram or the map that goes from the end of the grassy area all the way to 12 Mile, right along the viaduct. And it's a, it's a very, it's a very narrow path. It has turned into an artist colony, so to speak, because a number of people have, have attached artwork and little sculptures and things in that pathway. And so it's a very interesting walk through that area. But in terms of general pedestrian activity, most people, if they're walking in their area at all, will walk to the cul-de-sac, walk around the circle, and then come back and go south on Forestale. There's very, very, very little pedestrian traffic in that area. So I personally don't see the need for a sidewalk whatsoever. I'm less familiar with the, with number two, but there again, because the availability of sidewalks on the other side and not really a whole lot of pedestrian activity there because you're stopped by the railroad, you can't get under the railroad, you have to go to Webster, or not to Webster, to Greenleaf to go underneath the railroad. There's very little pedestrian activity there as well. So I really, in terms of those situations, don't think it's justified. I have opinions about item number three, but we haven't gotten down there yet, so I'll wait on that one.
Commissioner Macy.
We haven't gotten down there yet? We haven't gotten down, we haven't gotten down there yet? Well, we could. Oh. All right. Okay. All right, then I'm done. I'm relatively familiar with this area because I frequent that hardware store a lot, between them and Friends Hardware. I kind of keep the hardware business going in Royal Oak for a variety of reasons. So I go down Third Street and cut behind Ace Hardware and go in the back way, just because it's easier than going on forth. So I'm familiar with that beautiful green space area that is behind both the Ace Hardware and the CVS. And I agree with the, with the person who came up, that I, it's rare that I see any pedestrian activity in that area whatsoever, whether it's during the daytime when the stores are open or even in the evening when we're downtown. You're just not going in to a specific place by using that pedestrian corridor. And I think it's a beautiful green space. I think the owners or the whoever is taking care of the buildings, the building owners for both the hardware store and the CVS have done a great job improving that green space. The grass is very green, the bushes are lovely. It's a very park-like setting and because of the availability of the sidewalk on the other side of the street, which is where all the houses are, and because you really, you can't, there's no way to get into the back of the hardware store or the back of CVS. There's no back entrance to the stores. There's no need for pedestrians to have access on that side through a sidewalk. So I'm, I'm not really in favor of including a sidewalk on that section of Third Street either. So I would exempt that one.
Commissioner Macy.
All this talk about that. I don't think these pictures, you did them justice, Engineer Donahue.
Sorry.
Because I'm, I'm not, not seeing it there. But the question that I had was. The question that I had was somewhat related. If the roads millage passes and this... and these come up next year, or whatever comes up next year, the new sidewalks come up next year, would they be covered under the new roads millage? In your best guess? I mean, it feels like we talked about being able to cover some sidewalks. I'm just curious what that...
Sure. That's a great question. So the proposed road millage would begin in 2025 and go to 2034. We would finish out this existing six-year sidewalk program, which takes us into 2026, and do everything the way we're doing it now: direct billing, consider new sidewalks where none exists, and kind of go through that through 2026. Beyond that, we'll do a whole new cycle of sidewalks. So we'll be back here, and the earliest would be six years. It might be more like eight years by the time we get to this, and we could consider it at that time. And yes, the millage would fund improvements like that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dubb?
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, I'm inclined to agree with staff's recommendation on the first couple. And then as far as Third Street, in this kind of scenario, I'm usually well-aligned with what the engineer wants to accomplish, which is complete our streets. It is, in most ways, a good candidate for it. I think what is unique about this situation is that on the north side of the street, you have all residential, and they're facing a back alley. And this green buffer, I think, is doing a service for those residents in that it's providing a nicer aesthetic before you hit that alley. So I'm trying to balance that value that I think it brings to those residents with our complete streets' priority. And I think in this case, just given that, you know, we have sidewalks on both sides of the streets everywhere. This is something we do. This is something we talk about. That's our standard: sidewalks go on both sides of the street. But I do think this is unique because that green space is providing a value to the residents all along that side. And my gut right now is that in this circumstance outweighs any benefit this sidewalk would bring because it's not really connecting a lot to a lot because there's a bend in the road right there. So folks traversing on the north side, and there's no access to the building from the south side, I feel like leaving the green space as it is is the greater community benefit in this particular area. But in general, I'm supportive of sidewalks on both sides of the streets. It's what we do. But given that you're looking right at the alley, I think the more green, the better for the folks in this neighborhood.
Anybody else? Mr. Collo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this is also one I've kind of been going back and forth on quite a bit. It's hard. So I guess, Mr. Donahue, I do have a question. If, let's say, we do install sidewalks, where would they go in relationship to the curb and then the greenery, the bushes, the shrubs that we see by that fence?
In this location, it would be about two feet off of the back of curb. I don't think there's any trees that we have to work around where we would go right up to the back of curb. That's always an option if roots are in the way or if there's something like that. But when we laid it out, just looking at it in the field, that's kind of how we eyeballed it: be about two feet off back of curb.
So would those shrubs that we see along the fence line still exist?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, just the one tree we would take down and then the one shrub over by the ramp at Phillips Place.
Okay. So I do appreciate the comments. I am kind of stuck, though, because, you know, this is... if this were up in the northern end of the city, maybe even past 11 Mile, that's one thing. This is in our CBD, so it is. Or, you know, it's in our downtown area adjacent to it. It's how people do get to our downtown. So, you know, I'm a 50/50 toss-up, especially hearing that we are going to preserve the shrubs, the green space. This, I mean, with all respect, this isn't a park. It is, you know, it is a patch of grass with shrubs on it because it's easement. So I am looking at the future development of that building, on what that could be. It's, you know, that's not always going to be what it looks like. And there's going to be... it has great potential, looking at, you know, potential drawings that we just saw laid out, the master plan shred last week, of how this could just as part of connected city. So when looking at that and knowing that this isn't a downtown, like I said, I'm 50/50, maybe leaning a little bit more towards, yes, you know, we have set the policy. Being so close to downtown, this is an area we would want to complete and keep on going sidewalks.
Anybody else?
I'll just add that. I appreciate the arguments of all my colleagues up here. I think for me, I walk this quite a bit, coming to City Hall or just taking the dog for a walk or often going to... you know, three kids, they usually get sick, and that's close pharmacy. So we're there grabbing stuff. And, I mean, I rarely walk on Third Street behind there. There's nothing to really access, you know. If this were... if this property were to ever be redeveloped, I think we'd do like a site plan where it said, hey, have, you know, more pedestrian feel on either side if you're going to have access to your buildings on all sides. But I tend to lean more towards the fact that this is a small strip with no actual direct access, dead ending into another street on Knowles. And so I think while I get the idea to connect it, I just think that the trade-off here isn't worth it for the green space and buffer that it provides. So I'm not quite 50/50. I'm probably like 70/30.
Commissioner Dubb?
I'll just get us going here. I'm going to move to exempt sidewalk locations one, two, and three from the current program.
Motion by Commissioner Dubb, second by Commissioner Macy. All right. Let's now call for the vote. Those who say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. This is interesting because we have sidewalk location one, one, two, and three.
Well, one is still one. It's just two different properties at one.
The way the motion was made, you just... okay. So we're...
I exempted one, two, and locations one, two, and three.
Okay. Good.
Right? We're good?
Then we're good. Clarification on the numbering. All right. This brings us to item 10, which is a public hearing on the adoption of the Fiscal Year 2023/2024 Budgets and General Appropriations Act. We'll let Director Lichtenberg open it up, and then we'll have any questions, and then we'll open up the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Just one moment while I pull this up. And that's what happens when you type too fast. All right. Well, thank you very much. We are at the point in the budget process where we have had work sessions, and we are... we've made a few modifications from the recommended budget and are bringing that to you this evening for conversation on that and a recommendation for approval. I do want to recap a few things from the budget process. Just a reminder to everyone, we do have a new budget platform. So the budget is now available in print form, PDF, and in an interactive database program through OpenGov. So we invite everyone to take a look at that. As a recap again of the key goals that were listed in the City Manager's Letter of Transmittal, this budget focused on advancing high-priority initiatives, made a commitment to reliable infrastructure, it focused on building and enhancing community amenities, enhancing communications, and achieving long-term fiscal health. This budget includes eight newly created full-time positions. Capital investments include over $28 million, which includes infrastructure for parks, buildings, roads, water and sewer, and other long-lived assets. From an operational perspective, the budget focused on aligning the daily operations with the key strategy plan, which would be the strategic plan and its goals, the S-CAP, also the Aging in Place Plan and other key initiatives that the city has put through. In terms of the staffing levels that I mentioned, there are eight new positions. This slide just shows a brief recap of where we would end up with a total of 370 full-time positions. This is still down from the high of 408 positions in the 2003-2004 year. So the new positions are in the area of the District Court, one court clerk and a probation officer, a sustainability coordinator in... related to the S-CAP implementation, an elections assistant, a police records clerk, the DPS operations manager, and two library positions, one being a librarian one and also an administrative assistant. There were other positions that were not included in the proposed budget, and we just include them here just for reference. They include the court clerk position, a management analyst, an assistant city attorney, recreation coordinator, a deputy director of DPS, parking systems manager, and a recreation director. I spoke briefly about the significant investment that this budget makes in capital improvements. The CIP plan is a summary of all of those investments in different categories. This is a five-year planning tool. This year, the capital improvement plan is included as part of the budget document, so you can reference it in its entirety there. We have also provided you with a crosswalk between the original CIP plan that was presented to the Planning Commission back in February and the final recommendation for funding so that it's clear how that plan shifted in terms of the timing of certain projects as the budget workshops went forward. During the budget sessions, we provided you with a look at those capital projects in a number of different ways, including by grouping or category: water and sewer, sidewalks, local streets, et cetera. We also grouped it by priority level, defining certain projects as essential or mandated, important, value-added, or desired. And we also took a look at how these projects aligned with the city's strategic goals. And that is the pie chart on the right. And just as a reminder, there are over $28 million worth of investments included in this proposed budget. And then just for a quick recap of those projects by priority, within the 23-24 budget, there's $3.1 million that is considered essential or mandated and another $21.4 million that are included as important. Commission also asked administration to provide a look at what the impact on the general fund fund balance would look like at various levels of investment in capital. This slide is... shows that recap. This shows in the green area the desired range for the unassigned fund balance, which is in the 10% to 25% of total expenditures grouping. The yellow falls below that 10% mark, and of course, the black line would take it into negative territory. So we will be planning our capital investments to make sure that we remain in that green range. That will involve looking for additional funding sources for some of the projects, stretching them out into later years, and leveraging whatever partnerships that we can. This also shows that the forecast really is a planning tool, and it allows us to make adjustments before we end up in the territory that is outside of that green desired area. This budget also included more of a reflection of how the forecast was built. We've included a complete list of the forecast assumptions in the budget document, and a few of them are recapped here for you. When we look at the high-level summary, the general fund has a total expenditures of $49.3 million, with the majority of that, or a large portion of that, being the transfers out to the Public Safety Fund and personnel being another significant portion of the spending. Revenue comes in from property taxes and a variety of other areas. In this proposed budget, we're anticipating a planned use of fund balance of just under $2.9 million. Because the general fund does subsidize a good portion of the public safety expenses, we often look at the two funds combined on a combined basis. The total expenditures is just under $65 million, and revenue is at six point... just under $6.2 million. So we are anticipating a planned use of fund balance for these two funds combined of a little over $3.7 million. This is just a short, a quick look at the general fund and public safety fund combined. Again, looking at the forecast period. This does highlight that there is a strong relationship between the general fund, funding the public safety, and does indicate that we will need to make some adjustments going forward in future budget discussions. Overall, the city appropriates or passes a budget resolution for the general fund and the special revenue funds. All of these funds combined are a total expenditures of $139.5 million. Again, this is the look at all of the appropriated funds combined. There is a significant peak here in the 2023 projected, which is the ARPA funding coming into the picture. When we look at all of the funds of the city, not just the appropriated funds, this includes the enterprise funds and internal service funds as well. The total expenditures are just under $242 million. So we do have a significant budget that we operate with. Looking at the projected fund balances, one of the items that you will be passing or voting on with the resolution this evening is the fund balance policies. Again, for the general fund, this shows that 10% to 25% policy that we have, limiting the transfers that can be made out of the non-major enterprise funds and the auto parking fund and a requirement on the state construction code fund of not less than 50% of budgeted expenditures. This slide shows a lot of information, the most important of which is that with this proposed budget, as it is currently stated, the unassigned fund balance for the general fund will be at 17.3%, which is right in that policy range of 10% to 25%. Likewise, when we combine general fund and public safety, we remain in that policy range. On the property tax front, we did want to show... On the property tax front, we did want to show the trend in overall city property values. The red line indicates the assessed value of properties, and the blue line indicates the taxable value of all properties in the city. As inflation increases and property values go up, there becomes a gap between that assessed value and the taxable value, as we can see here. And I did want to point out that based on these numbers, the approximate value of one mil of tax levy is just under $3.7 million. A quick history of the city millage rates. You can see the trend here. We have added some special millages in recent years, and each of those is indicated down in the legend at the bottom as to when those millages were added. The most recent of those being the parks and the senior millages that were added this past year. One thing that we'd like to look at is for a longtime resident who has a home that would have been valued at a sales price of $300,000 beginning in 1998, that house would today potentially be worth just over $862,000. However, and so, the state equalized value would be half of that, which is 431, but with the state laws on property taxation, the taxable value of that same property is only $270,000, creating this gap, which is the brown area, that is the benefit to the homeowner for maintaining one residence and having a capped property. For that same resident, a tax bill 26 years ago would have been just under $2,000, and today is just is a little over $4,700. One of the things I just wanted to reflect here is for this resident, one mil is equivalent to $270, and you can compare that, you know, as a fraction of that one mil citywide that is just under $3.7 million. When we look at what the impact is of taxable value versus changes in millage rates, this slide shows the area in gray is how the tax bill would have changed if the millages had stayed constant and just been impacted by taxable value increases. And you can see that the majority of that change in the tax bill is from that increase in taxable value, and the remainder is from the effect of changes in millage rates. For this year's budget, there is no headly rollback, so the majority of our millage rates will remain at the same level as they were in 2022. One item that I do want to point out here, because there is a typo in the resolution that you received, this is accurate here. The public safety millage is 3.6615. On the resolution, it is listed at 3.6815, and that is incorrect. So, again, the correct amount is 3.6615. The library millage was voted for renewal this past year, so that is the main reason for the increase there. This places us pretty much right in the middle of the pack when we compare what our millage rate is to surrounding communities and other cities within Oakland County. Average millage rate across this board is 18.2 mils, and the city portion is at 17.6. Just a reminder that when residents write their bill for taxes, even though they write that check to the city of Royal Oak, all of those dollars do not stay with the city. For every dollar of tax paid, only 46 cents stays with the city for their operations. The rest goes to the schools, the county, and the community college. So, this orange portion here represents what the city operates on. And then, just breaking that 46 cents down even further, the city has certain dedicated millages that can only be used for special purposes. Each of those are listed out here at the top. And then, all of the other city operating functions with this 18 cents that's left over, and that is shown down at the bottom, and that leaves us with 6 cents that we are funding a lot of the support services of the city through. One of the other items you'll be approving, asked to approve tonight, is the water and sewer rates. Just a quick recap on this. We did talk about how water usage over time has declined as consumers have implemented more water-saving, high-efficiency appliances and other practices. This has put a bit of a strain on the water system, as most of our rates are based on that variable usage. We always estimate the amount of water that will be sold as we're setting rates, and as that trend of usage has gone down, it has impacted rates as we move forward. When we look at how the average quarterly bill has been impacted, the blue line represents if this user had not changed their usage patterns at all. Over time, their bill would have been significantly higher than the average customer who has been more conservative in their water usage, which is shown by the orange line. Overall, the annual average increase for a typical user has been 1.4%. We also have swings that come in the water rates due to capital outlay requirements. And when we look at the proposed water rates that we have in front of you this evening, we are proposing an increase of 25 cents per unit for the metered water charge, an increase of $1.18 per unit on the sewer variable rate charge, and a $1 increase in the flat-rate administrative service fee. When we look at how this impacts a typical user, a typical low user in a one-person household, the annual impact of this would be $32.60, which is approximately $2.72 per month. A typical user who has an average usage would experience an increase of $95.52 for the year, or just under $8 per month, and a high user would experience $296.28 annual increase, or about a little over $24 per month. Again, what you have in front of you this evening is a total of nine resolutions. Starting with the budget resolution, the cover memo on this detailed the differences between what was in the recommended budget and what is in the adjusted budget that is in front of you, which was the removal of three of the proposed positions. And, other than that, in the resolution two, as I mentioned, there is the one typo with the public safety millage, and the remaining resolutions are laid out in front of you. And then, the last thing that I want to mention before we open it up is just that the budget and brief, we have completed the first draft of it, and I've provided you all with a copy. After this evening, we will be finalizing this and making it available on the website, and we do intend to have some printed copies available, both at the senior center and the library. We do think that it provides a nice snapshot and high-level introduction to the budget, so if any of you have any comments or questions about that, please let me know as well, as that is something brand-new. And, that's, I'm done.
Questions?
No questions.
We spent 16 hours on this before. I think we asked all the questions.
So, what I'll do is I'll open up the public hearing, and same rules apply. Does anyone wish to speak at this public hearing? Oh, Ms. Wagner, come on up. I'll start doing the Rod Roddy voice this time tonight. Come on down.
Ms. Wagner. With regards to adding more people to the roster, the employment chart, 11 were proposed. We're down to eight. I'm not in favor of adding anybody except somebody for the city clerk's office because of the law changes. But, given that you did already say you wanted to add someone for a management position, the idea that, and I, you know, I get that everybody's got their passions. I have my passions, too, and I get that certain people want to have it all for S-CAP and sustainability. We've got an aging-in-place platform out there, a five-year plan that took a lot of hours to put together, and we have no advocates for it. And that's evidenced by the fact that this budget is taking no dollars from the general fund. It's strictly coming from the millage, and that is not what the people expected when they voted for the millage. So, I'd like to see, as part of the budget, I'd like to see more money come from the general fund that doesn't go just to the senior center, because that isn't what aging-in-place is. It's the activities at the senior center, but it's also the rest of the community, and there should be monies appropriated for that. And if you want to know where they should go, look at the plan. As Commissioner Douglas knows, there's a lot of stuff in there. So, there should be $670,000 out there to help that plan, to help seniors, and not just sustainability, and have someone who's an advocate for it at City Hall. Whether that's another person, an extra hire, over and above the sustainability manager, I don't know. But, that's what I'd like you to consider before passing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Anybody else want to speak at the night's public hearing on the budget? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. We're going to discussion this side of the table, open it up to the commission to make motions, make discussion, make amendments, and make a brief. Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, so, we have a series of nine budget resolutions in front of us, assuming we're going to go one by one, approving them, and I will begin by approving Resolution One, the budget resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Dubac. Discussion on this one. With none, I'll call for the vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Anybody else want to make? Commissioner Prush?
I will move approval of Resolution Number Two, which sets the tax rates.
Motion by Commissioner Prush. Is there a second?
With understanding that the rates as discussed for public safety, right?
Yeah, the edited millage of three.
Yes, yes.
Seconded by Commissioner Macy. Discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Macy.
Move approval of Resolution Three.
To authorize the tax administration fee?
Correct.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Colo. Discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Commissioner Colo.
I move Resolution Four.
Water and sewage disposal rates. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Prush. Any discussion? I'm seeing the pattern. I'll call for a vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Anybody else? Commissioner Douglas?
I'll move approval of Resolution Five, purchases.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Colo. Discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Commissioner Prush?
I'll move approval of Resolution Six.
Okay, we have motion by Commissioner Prush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Colo. Discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Commissioner Macy?
I'll move approval of Resolution Seven, transfers.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubac. Discussion?
That's how the table woke up.
I know. No discussion, other than that brief comment? Call for the vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, anybody else? Commissioner Prush?
Move approval of Resolution Eight.
Second by Commissioner Dubac. Discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, there's one more left. Commissioner Hunt?
I'll move approval of Resolution Nine.
All right, we have motion by Commissioner Hunt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dubac. Discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Oh, discussion? Sorry. Motion passes. Okay, Commissioner Douglas.
Mayor, I would like to introduce Resolution Ten to our agenda tonight. I will kind of give a brief summary, and then, I'll read the proposed text of the resolution.
Okay.
You'll recall that our last meeting, as we've heard, the city manager had approved 11 new positions in the city. The city commission approved eight of those, with a net balance of a little less than, the original budget was around $900,000. The resulting expenditures are around $750,000, but that money had been initially budgeted. At the same time, a position that would have provided part-time leadership for the implementation of our senior services aging-in-place task force was not implemented. So, I went to the city manager, and I rounded up from the quarter million dollars and asked the city manager to find a way to spend $300,000 on parks and/or rec and/or senior programs, addressing the concerns that were also mentioned at that meeting, that we were not adding any new funds to those programs. And I compliment the city manager and the finance director for coming up with what I think is a pretty elegant solution. This resolution sequesters $300,000 from the general fund for use for matching grant applications that we may submit. We have a new grants manager. She consulted with the leadership team, is optimistic that there are opportunities out there for us to bring in money, and we all know that often, especially with state and federal dollars, they are looking for match, so this would have that matching money available for those grants. I will say that come next April, if if we have not used that money up for grants, I'm going to be looking for ways to spend it on other needed senior parks, rec programs, but we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. So with your indulgence, I will read this resolution. Some of you have this text, or a couple minor changes, so bear with me there. Whereas the City Commission wishes to emphasize its ongoing commitment in support of capital improvements and amenities within the city's parks and senior center facilities, and in an effort to provide financial flexibility to pursue county, state, federal, or private foundation grants and other partnerships, and seeks to approve this resolution to capture a portion of the unassigned general fund balance and create an assignment of fund balance in the amount of $300,000. And whereas this assigned fund balance amount will be for the purpose of the parks, capital improvements, and senior services on a one-time basis, and whereas the assignment of fund balance does not constitute an appropriation or authorization to spend, but rather will set aside funds that may be requested through a future budget amendment for the above stated purposes only, and will require a staff recommendation with review by any relevant committee with a final authorization by the City Commission, and whereas these assigned funds will be given the highest priority as a local grant match required by a county, state, federal, or private foundation funding opportunity. If such a match can be substituted from the American Rescue Plan Act funds, the amount will be reduced from the assigned fund balance. And, whereas this assignment of fund balance is expected to be utilized within the 2023-2024 fiscal year, any unused portion of the assigned fund balance will expire at the close of business June 30, 2024, with the unspent balance reverting back to the unassigned fund balance of the General Fund. Now therefore be resolved, the City Commission approves the assignment of $300,000 from the General Fund balance for the purposes of the parks, capital improvement, and senior center services needs, with an expiration of the assignment on June 30, 2024. I move approval of the resolution.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion? Commissioner Dubac.
Yeah, so if I understand correctly, in addition to what we have in this budget, which does include a substantial amount of money towards CIP priorities, which includes parks and senior services and senior center and things, we're adding $300,000 onto that from General Fund in the event that we can get grant dollars and can leverage these as matching dollars, is that right? So essentially, we're just pulling $300,000 from what would be next year's budget into this year's budget in order to basically do more things in the plan that would have been in the following year, because we're spending down General Fund at a faster rate.
But using it to bring in additional funds, not already in the budget.
Only in the event that we can leverage even more dollars for them.
Okay.
But I mean, there's like no new revenue. We're just pulling forward General Fund. So it's going to, did the arc, the spending trajectory that we saw does not incorporate this, correct?
That is correct. And so, just to clarify, this resolution does not change the budget. It just segregates a portion of that rainy day fund into an assigned category. So it's not in the unassigned anymore. It's in this assigned spot. It's like a separate little piggy bank.
Okay. And in the event that we don't, and they only get pulled if there's matching dollars, is that right?
The way the resolution is written, but, well, if we look at the end of next year and this money hasn't been spent, I might be making a case for spending it.
I mean, it's all spent this year, spending the next year budget. We're going to have to deal with the General Fund until more revenue comes in. But I am more optimistic than the budget projections are, anyway. And I think getting the amenities and the investments in place sooner than later is better for residents and I think better for the outlook of our city. So I have no objection to it. I just want to make sure I understand the dollars and cents of it, that we're basically just making dollars that we wouldn't have spent this year that we would have been sending in the General Fund next year, available this year.
Yes. Okay. And I think we're also showing our hand to any grant contributors that, you know, it's in there. It's a priority. It's, you know, been flagged, and that coming up with the money is not going to be an impediment or hurdle, which might help with your chances of obtaining the grant. We'll go with Commissioner Macy, then Commissioner Colo.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas, for bringing this forward. I actually, I don't read it as being required to be matching. It's not. It says, "In an effort to provide that flexibility to pursue them," we're setting this aside, "and will be for the purpose of parks, capital improvements, and senior services on a one-time basis." I don't see that it says, this is the highest priority as a local grant match, but it seems to me like, I mean, obviously, that's the point, and that's with the purpose. But you won't have to work hard to convince me at the end of the year that we need to spend this if we haven't been able to find matching grants. I don't think it's going to require too much maneuvering. But anyway, I'm glad to see this. The Parks and Rec Board had come forth with also asking for about the same amount of money, and I think encouraging them to pursue some grant opportunities to get those things funded could be great. So, yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Colo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, one concern I do have is that there's a comment about any relevant committee must approve of this before we approve of it.
Not approve, review.
Review. So I guess, what's a relevant committee? Is it the Aging in Place? Is it the senior services and Parks and Rec? Is it going to be the EAB? Because it affects the Climate Action Plan. I'm concerned when we involve a committee and call a relevant committee, there's a little bit too much open to interpretation, especially when this is coming from a recommendation from staff, working off of the CIP, working off of, you know, hopefully, matching grants. You know, it's coming to the final decision-makers here, you know, with the seven of us at the table who are tasked with properly spending the money. So I guess I'm a little concerned about any reference to committee because it's not both too specific and not specific enough to really hone in on who might need to look at this.
We hear from the, for example, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and Commissioner Macy would probably say this if she had the floor, that they feel like they are not consulted on work that is done in their arena. So they're, for starters, "We further inform and empower an existing body." There is the possibility that we will create a senior service advisory board and pull that function out of the Parks, Rec, and Seniors Board, but we don't know if that's going to happen. So I feel that the, and we are not requiring a committee to approve anything or to allocate funds, which is the sole province of the City Commission. And I'm confident that we, as a commission and staff, can identify if there is a relevant committee and bring this to them just for informational purposes and advisory purposes.
Commissioner Macy?
So I think that was very well stated and stated, as you said, that's what I would have said as well about the Parks and Rec Board. I guess I cannot see a reason why we would hesitate to ask some of our citizen boards to get involved in someone's decision-making. Like, this is exactly what I thought that the committee review was supposed to bring to light, is that we're not using these boards maybe to their best ability. And it seems to me that just because it's not clear for every single one which committee that will be, I mean, our staff can figure it out, I think. And maybe it's more than one, and maybe it's not. But it doesn't seem to me as to be a reason to say, "No, no, no, we don't need their input." Yes, we do. That's exactly what we need, and that's why we have those boards in the first place. So I strongly support the keeping that piece in the resolution.
Commissioner Prush?
I would concur with that, especially since it's the Park and Recreation and Senior Advisory Board's responsibility to develop and amend and revise in the appropriate timeframe, the park's master plan. I mean, they're intimately involved with master planning for our entire park system. So to the extent that we are going to be considering any kind of grant program for any particular park improvement or recreation improvement, the people who develop the master plan seems to me at least deserve a heads-up as to what we're thinking about and an opportunity to comment. So I think it's entirely appropriate to include this. They're not given an authority to turn it down or to modify it or to, you know, to veto it. But I think they deserve an opportunity to comment, and because they do very good work in terms of during the master plan, and they know it best.
Commissioner Colo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to clarify, because I don't think the last year commissioners quite understood what I was saying. It is not necessarily, I don't think Parks and Rec should look at it. I don't think a committee should look at it. The language that was given says a relevant, any relevant, it says any relevant committee, as I heard it. Any relevant committee. So I'm just worried we're going to have eight different committees asked to review something. Mr. Briggs' office has telegraphed to us in the past that they feel overtaxed at times and overburdened, and I just, I worry that we're creating too much administrative paperwork. We're just trying to do good by the Parks and Rec and Senior Services Department in town. So I just, I want to be clear. My worry is not of having this as involvement, is this doesn't quite state where it's going.
Commissioner Dubac?
I'm just curious if a simple amendment along the lines of any relevant committee is determined by staff
Sure.
would satisfy Commissioner Colo's concern.
All right, so I will move to amend.
You don't even, if people agree, you probably don't even need to make a motion.
Oh, you have to, right? Because you read it.
Oh, okay, fine.
Motion by Commissioner Dubac. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Colo. Discussion on this amendment? All right, no discussion. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Now the original motion is amended to clarify what staff deems is relevant for the committee. Okay, all right. Any other discussion on this motion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. We have a Tenth Amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Good idea. Good thinking on staff's part.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the next agenda item, which is, I have it open. Hopefully, it's the next one. Adoption of Master Administrative Fee Schedule. Effective July 1st, 2024.
Yes, thank you.
Good.
So what is in front of you this evening is a first compilation of all of the administrative fees that are charged citywide that are not outlined in another governing location, such as an ordinance. The staff and administration has made every effort to capture every fee. We will add the slight caveat that as we move forward with using this master fee schedule, there may be other fees that we realize were left off, which we would bring to you at a future time. But this is our best effort to gather all of them into one place, which provides a single document for residents to use as a point of reference when they are looking for the fees that the city is charging. I provided you in Attachment One is the actual fee schedule that would be posted on the city's website. Attachment Two is a comparison of what the fees currently are and any proposed differences in this new rate. And I will point out, there were two typographical errors. Both of them were within the clerks categories. One, on page eight, there was a line that was inadvertently omitted for the Arts Beats Needs Parking Station fee for existing regular parking station of $150. And on page nine, there was a typo in the City Commission Chamber rental for more than four hours. It should be $75 for the door attendant and $170 for the room rental. With that, I will turn it over for any questions or comments you may have.
Questions?
You read the chambers.
Comments?
I have no idea.
Commissioner Prush?
I'll move approval of the resolution approving this administrative fee schedule and establishing the fees.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Prush, second by Commissioner Dubac. Discussion? All right, no discussion. Call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Okay. Director Lichtenberg?
I think we're, are we good? I think we are.
We're good for tonight?
I've talked enough.
And for everybody that this may be their first witness to the budget process, there were many other meetings that we had before that went from okay to shaping it up to getting it to a point where tonight it was all in good shape to get a clean approval. Some discussion, but it isn't that we don't know what's in here. We just spent lots of time previously getting it to this point. We really applaud the effort of our finance team and city management for, I think this is the best budget process I've been through in 12 years. Have I been up here 12 years? Eleven years? Almost 12 years? Man, getting old. And really applaud it and appreciate the efforts in a way that communicates this complicated budget full of state statutes and all of these other complicated things, and putting it into a piece that people can actually understand, not just commissioners, but the general public. And I think people have to understand how their money's being spent, the decisions that we're making. So not only can they advise us, but also, you know, hold us to account. So grateful for all your efforts and what you brought to the table this year. Thank you so much.
Yeah, well done. Thank you.
Knock on the table, everyone, come on.
Here, here.
All right. So, that brings us to Item 12. The Michigan Liquor Control Commission License Establishment Facility Concessions, 318 West Fourth Street, request to approve new plan of operation. It's a tough act to follow. Chief Moore, we'll give you a shot.
I'm ready, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of commission.
We've got our faith in you.
The Royal Oak Police Department received a request from the Royal Oak Music Theater to review a new plan of operation. Essentially, what they're requesting is to change the company that's in charge of their concessions at the music theater. So Facility Concession Services LLC will purchase the Class C liquor license from Worldwide Entertainment, R-O-M-T, LLC, for $150,000. Facility Concession Services LLC has been involved in the music theater and alcohol business for many years, including 31 liquor licenses held throughout 11 different states. business for many years, including 31 liquor licenses held throughout 11 different states. This will, however, be their first license held in Michigan. The applicants have employed Anthony Osco as a general manager and Jason Reed to oversee operations here in Royal Oak. Both of them have extensive history involving the sale of alcohol. A records check with all the regulating bodies in the various states did not reveal any violations for any of the licenses that they hold, and contact with the local law enforcement agencies in those areas did not discover any issues or violations and stated they were responsible operators. So our findings indicate that they have had extensive history with the service of alcohol and sale of alcohol for many years, and the police department is not opposed to their request. I'd be happy to take any questions and just note that the applicant and their attorney are here in the audience tonight also, if there are further questions.
Questions for Chief Moore. Commissioners want to come up and say a few words? I mean, you sat through a budget presentation.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it might be a necessary health concern to stand up and move around.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, Steve Grobel, I'm the attorney for Facility Concession Services. I also happen to be a Royal Oak resident. So just want to quick introduce the folks, many of whom traveled ways to get here tonight. Jason Reed, who's the vice president of venues for Facility. Justin Miller, where's Justin on the end? He's the vice president of operations for AEG. John Steivenberg, who's the, actually, the general manager over at Royal Oak Music Theater for AEG. And then Anthony Osco, who's the director of concessions for Facility. So as the chief mentioned, the, presently, AEG is the owner and operator of the Royal Oak Music Theater, and that's not changing. That's going to remain the same. All we're doing here is we're changing the beverage concession air from Worldwide Entertainment to Facility Concession Services. So as the chief mentioned, Facility is a nationwide operation. They've been in business since 1992. They service stadiums, a lot of music festivals, and also a number of theaters. So Jason's in charge of the theater and venue operations. So chief mentioned, there's over 30 presently in the United States. We're Massachusetts, New York, Ohio, but this is our first in Michigan. So, but the AEG folks and Facility work very closely together. I think there's 23 AEG sites, venues, theaters across the country where Facility is the food or food and beverage concessionaire. So they're bringing that experience, that working relationship here to the Royal Oak Music Theater. As I said, these guys are really good operators. They run a good business. They know what they're doing. They've been in it a long time. They're very professional. And the plan of operation that we submitted to you is essentially identical to the plan of operation, excuse me, that Worldwide Entertainment. In talking with Lieutenant Renaud over at the police department, you know, she requested, you know, that things remain unchanged in terms of what we're willing to do and cooperate with the city. We were absolutely fine with that, no problem. So everything essentially remains the same in terms of our alcohol management, our cooperation with the police department. So we're here, I brought these guys up from Cincinnati and Tennessee, and just in case you had any questions, they take this very seriously. It's a very important foray into Michigan for them. They want you to know how important it is. Their presence here tells you how important it is to them. So if you have any questions about operations or anything of that nature, these are the guys who can answer them for you if you have any.
You guys got any questions?
I can ask them something.
Commissioner Dubb?
Does this change bring about any noticeable difference to your customers? I see shows are regularly.
Service will be that.
All right. Well, that's good.
We're fast.
Now, is it just a management changeover or is it an entire staff changeover? Are current staff all being displaced?
We'll interview them on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
There's probably some that should stay and there's probably some that you go.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Good. Any other questions? Oh, Commissioner Collo?
Do you see your price points changing a lot in this changeover also?
Our price points?
Yes.
Most probably not. Not unless they're, I'm assuming they're at market value now, but we're not just going to come in and make blanket changes just to make changes.
Okay. Do you mind the commission comes and makes an inspection during like the Ed Sheeran concert that's coming up that you can't get tickets to?
That's any shit.
Daytime, guys.
Don't answer, don't answer that.
We felt bad we noticed the season tickets getting handed out. Some gin and tonics or something, but that's, MLCC frowns on that, so.
What do you mean, you want your ice cream cone with sprinkles? Come on, man. No, I, I mean, I think, you know, the Royal Oak Music Theater is important to us. Many establishments are important to us here in Royal Oak. It means a lot that you came up from different places because, you know, we always have the mentality here that, you know, give people a shot and, you know, don't suspect what's going to go wrong, but when something does, you know, work with them, have a good relationship with our police department, and things usually go really, really well. So I'm glad to hear that, you know, our PD doesn't have any objections. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't move forward, and it means a lot that you're here. Hopefully, you're enjoying Royal Oak and, you know, not so much, I mean, you're here all the time. But no, thank you.
Excited.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, I'll move approval of the resolution.
A motion by Commissioner Douglas is our second. Second by Commissioner Prush. She has quick hands.
She's so fresh, shaking.
Any discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. Halls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thanks a lot.
See you around town.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And thank you for waiting it out tonight.
Yep.
All right, that brings us to item 13, last item, which is the discussion of the new city commission agenda letter format. Mr. Briggs?
Good evening, Mayor Fournier and members of the city commission. There was a request that was made at the previous meeting to standardize the format, the information that's presented to you. I do not plan on going through each chapter and verse. This is just really meant as a demonstration. To carry this forward, one of the discussions that we're having internally is looking at the prospect of changing over our agenda management system to a online platform very similar to Open Gov. The packet that you receive, this is all manually done, and it's very labor-intensive. And there are platforms that are competitive, so there's not a single vendor that's out there that's would be chosen, but we're looking at the prospect of doing that, that would really simplify that. So if there are reviews that need to be done by legal, reviews that need to be done by finance, will be done seamlessly, that through this automation system will ping these directors as opposed to physically moving a paper around from one office to the next. So just the same, I wanted to give you a glimpse of, we have this all-encompassing. This is not meant that every single agenda item must check every single box, because that way it dilutes the message. But there are instances where we do need to do our due diligence and to demonstrate the background consensus building and whatever's applicable that's along the lines. So no worries that it will not go through eight different committees before it comes to the city commission, because that does slow down the progress when there's a deadline-sensitive issue that comes that needs immediate action. But wanted to show you and I commend Ms. Lichtenberg as well as Ms. Barkman that spent a fair amount of time to come up with kind of best practices that are out there. So ultimately, this does not need city commission approval, but wanted to show that this is something that the ask that was made is taken very seriously, and that we hope that the end product will help you be better informed decision-makers as you contemplate whether it be new programs or new regulatory functions or whatever the issue may be, but will help us to be even better prepared in that regard. So periodically, this is not one of those stick-on-the-shelves and, you know, maybe you'll hear from us in six months. No, we have a kind of a kickoff meeting scheduled next week. I'm hoping early within the fiscal year, so in July or likely August, September, coming back with some sort of a recommendation if we do acquire that type of system. They're not overly horrendously expensive by any means, so, but I would have past experience and especially with Ms. Barkman, who came from a community much, much larger that had a pretty sophisticated system. She has good experience to bring, you know, what would be usable for us and would be size-appropriate for this type of organization. So again, unless you have specific questions, I'm not going to go into the in-depth sort of discussion, but if there's questions either for myself or Ms. Lichtenberg, happy to answer those questions.
Commissioner Dubb?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I think this looks great. I love where you're going here. I see how it would make things more efficient on your end. Like, did you check that box? It's like, yes, I literally checked that box. We build this kind of thing at work all the time for approvals and circulating things, make sure you get the right eyes on everything. Although one question I had was, do you anticipate there being any change when the commission adds an item to an agenda, or would that be added just as a discussion per usual and then maybe generates one of?
Oh, no, we're going to hold you to the same rules, no. Yeah, no, in the spirit of things giving you that latitude. And of course, I would assume that if you do bring something to the agenda, that you could point to one of those plans, whether it's Strategic Plan, SKAP, agent in place. And so that's repeatedly, we have that conversation, what's important to you. So you've already done that due diligence, and so, yes, you would have that latitude to add that to the system. And I'm not familiar with them because I have not worked with an agenda management system, but I believe it has the flexibility to incorporate that, but I could better answer that once we go through vetting out the vendors. And it's something that the vendors, it's really what best meets our needs that fits in with, we've kind of indoctrinated our own processes, and I do not intend to make that disruptive by any means, that, you know, really, this should be very seamless as we enter into it. It's more the backroom end of things is, you know, will take us less time, is really what I hope, so.
Cool. Yeah. I like hearing that, because I, in my private life, have experienced a transition to a new system that changed the way we did everything to reflect the system. You know, the system driving the business decisions versus the other way around where you find that system works for you. And there, yeah, the systems will always offer new ideas and new things to do, but if you dramatically try to change a culture and behavior and even the movement of paper to something completely unique and different, it'll have adoption issues. But if you, I like your strategy where it's like, well, what works for us? We've established things. We have things at work. How do we make them better, faster, and readily accessible?
Well said. And let me add one other detail. When we presented this, this was, you know, a paper review that we did on our end in a previous meeting. When I say meeting, so we do staff meetings, in fact, on Tuesday mornings, like meet with the directors and other applicable staff. And we covered this format, and it was a rather quiet meeting. I could sense the, you know, Paul, what are you doing to us than for us? So I appreciate that, that that's something that the system has to work within. But at the same time, it's too easy to be caught up in the moment, and a term that I've heard before through my professional development is having the horse blinders on, that we get so caught up that we do need to make sure that we vet this thoroughly through legal, or, Ms. Lichtenberg, do we even have this budget? And so, and that is the culture, that is not anything that's unique to Royal Oak. Of other places I've worked, it's the same thing, but I just had to add that in, and thank you for letting me indulge a little bit more information. So there is a little bit of change management that goes along with that, but I think it's, I couldn't agree with you more, is that the system needs to fit us and not us fitting the system.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, the one thing I didn't see in here was, and I see that the city attorney is possibly one of the people who will review these things, but I don't see a reference in here to, does this item affect the city charter, an ordinance, or a city policy? So it seems like you might want to fold that into your reports and evaluation.
Okay. Good point. Thank you.
And also, is this a one-off request from Commissioner Collo? So that could just be a check yes or no. Commissioner Collo, sorry. I'd have some fun.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really appreciate it. I just want to know, Mr. Briggs, what'd you get from us that you piled on a shelf for six months and forget about? I think that's the most important thing from your presentation today.
Is what?
He said he gets it sometimes, this isn't a thing he's going to get, like other things, and stick on a shelf for six months and forget about.
Well, if you forgot about it too, we all forgot. Oh, I never forgot.
No, look, I, what, I think we've spent enough discussion during the budget process of pointing back to these plans, and honestly, it holds all of us accountable to that. So I think this is, there's certain issues that do need to rise up to the top, and so...
Way more than response I was looking for.
Wow.
Thanks, Paul.
No problem, Brandon. All right. Anything else? No action on this one?
Nope.
All right, well, I'm looking forward to it. I think it will, you know, get staff buy-in and make department heads' lives a little easier and, you know, hopefully move it out, so.
That's the plan.
And we got a couple people we brought in that have some outside experience with these things, so they can contribute a lot and help us make the right decision. So, all right. All right, notwithstanding anything for the betterment of our fine community and our beloved citizens, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Prush is our second. Second by Commissioner Dubb. Discussion. All right, with none, call for the vote. Halls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we adjourn.